All the board members ready? Is the audience ready? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we will reconvene our April 11th Board of Supervisors meeting. We're hereby reconvened. We have the agenda before us. There were a couple of things we wanted to add. Mr. Seeley wanted to add something and then decided we'll wait for our next board meeting for that. And I believe we're going to have Mr. Cully. Present some information we have recently uncovered that will have a great deal of effect on the budget. So we will begin with Mr. Cully. And you have on the screen.
And your screen, their screens are working, correct? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We developed this memo yesterday after the adoption of the tax rates. Staff worked with the Commissioner of Revenue after they produced the personal property book, you know, they produce a personal property book and a a land book that's then transferred to the Treasurer's Office to create the bills and send the tax bills out. And so once the final download from DMV was completed and that book was finished, Tamika worked with them and it's approximately 6% growth in the number of vehicles, boats and other personal property, more than what we had anticipated. So that leaves the increase in personal property revenue of about 621,922 over what was in the proposed budget. There's also an increase in machinery and tools revenue of 231,485 and an increase to the motor vehicle carrier tax revenue of 53, 450. And that's based on the actual tax book, but it doesn't mean that a lot all come in, but that'll be what would be billed. And so that's a total increase in revenues of 906,857 over what we anticipated based on the the numbers from January. In looking at things in preparing for our third quarter budget report, staff analyzed preliminary data that we have up through March 31st. And so we made a couple of other recommended changes. We would like to increase the business professional occupancy B pole revenue to of an increase of 256,536 based on where B pole is trending over this current year's budget. And we want to decrease Amelant's EMS recovery revenue. It's not because we're running less calls. It's because we've got some issues in billing. Working with the billing company that builds that out. So we we don't anticipate we'll receive about 109,519. So we want to lower that line item by that amount. So that's a total increase of those two things of 147,017. So the net increase to the general fund revenue is 1,53874. Any questions?
I've got some after we've. You got a question now? One anyway, Mr. Cully, the loss of revenue regarding the recovery services. Those normally would have been billed to persons.
Insurance.
Insurance. So we're not going to get the money from the insurance companies because of a billing error on our part.
Not a billing error. I think I gotta have, I gotta have the expert, if you don't mind, answer that question.
So in the past, our collection rate was probably in the 86 to 87% rate. Right now we're down a little bit, about 6% below that.
Okay.
If you recall, in the in the board document a few months ago, we talked about raising our billing rates to compensate for some of that. And so we will see that come new effect July 1, and that's again only on insurance. So getting the money out of the insurance company is becoming harder and harder. With COVID, there were some delays in people's payments. They didn't have to make those. President Biden signed it a bill of a no surprise billing. So people are getting EMS bills and right now they can waive those and not pay those.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I just know the big picture. We'd expect in less money. Anyway, that's the increase. We do have some recommend recommended uses of the revenue increase we'd like to go through next. In the proposed budget, we were going to transfer 879,855 from the Carolina Detention Center Fund to the general fund. I would recommend we transfer that to the capital improvement fund. It's one time money that we've saved up over a number of years in CDF funds. And we would also need additional 59,073 from the general fund for a total of 938,928. Transfer that to the capital improvement fund and we would use that to pay cash rather than lease purchase the items in the capital improvement fund. So it's no new spending proposed for the capital improvement fund, but to do away with the lease purchases. You remember Courtney was here last year and said, we were real close to our borrowing threshold. So I think that will do us a lot of good if we don't take on any debt this year as that relates to our bond rating and our knocking on our door of being debt per capita and debt process value. This would reduce the projected total transfer from the undesigned fund balance to meet the expenditures in 24 by 114,946 from my proposed of 2,551,068 down to 2,436 and 122. In the utility fund, due to an increase in interest rates, we reevaluated the interest revenue that was occurring versus the cost for the $20 million in utility bar. And normally we don't have any interest income in the utility fund because we don't normally have a whole lot of cash there. And interest rates have been so low over the years, we really haven't, that's not a line item of real revenue in like it is in the general fund. We always have some interest in the general fund as far as revenue. So we we looked at that and we feel we can reduce the utility fund for debt service by 494,000 from 2,291,165 down to 1,797,165. So likewise, that'll lower the transfer from the general fund because you know, we were proposing to transfer significant dollars in the utility fund this year from the general fund by that same 494. So it's not new revenue to the general fund. It's just a less expense from the general fund. So if you do that, then you would reduce the undesigned general fund balance transfer, which we just lowered up there to 2,436,122 down to 1,942,122. So it would save you that much more in the general fund transfer. So it's not new revenue in the general fund, just a savings on expense from that transfer. Any questions about that? Sorry about the voice. Pollen's been killing me for two days. So this is sort of a summary of, it kind of sums it up. So the original county administrator budget, general fund was 64 million 525,593 less that transfer to the utility fund of 494,000 plus the 59,073 additional transfer to capital improvements to put with it. CDF transfer to capital improvements, the new expense budget general fund would be 64 million 90,666. The county administrators, original on the CIP was 1,125,694. We saved approximately $35,000 when the board authorized us to buy brush five on the contract from REC. So we, and that happened after we proposed the budget. So now that new expense budget is 1,9694. Monitors went out. I killed them.
The monitors keep going out. I mean, they're on now. Go ahead.
And as we propose to pay for that, basically with 59,000 from the general fund transferred. And then the rest of it would come from the detention center that would go detention center fund into CIP make cash purchases. So that's pretty much the close of of this report. I'm glad to answer any questions or discuss anything further, any other thing you have.
I had a question, Mr. Cully. Did you have a question, Mr. Forehand?
They're plugging something in.
I'm hot.
That's probably not plugged in somewhere between here and there. Mr. Blacksters don't work either.
Somewhere right here.
Right there. Where did it go?
Maybe that's the monitors too, because our monitors are.
I was in the middle between the last two over there is not plugged in. It's a network cable. If you plug the network cables in that port wrong, some of it doesn't work right either. One's got to go one and two into two. Learned that one time. Remember that? There we go. Sorry, didn't know that one.
Mr. Forehand, you had a question?
David, come back. Didn't, didn't stay.
All right, now that works. Mr. Cully, with the higher interest rates, are we expecting our revenue from interest on our general fund undesigned balance to?
We do. That's already in.
That's already in.
We, we normally have interest there, so it was easy to see that line item and adjust that up based on on what we had already gotten, what we, what we were seeing. It was, we started seeing an increase in in that in November significantly. But not having really any in the utility fund, it didn't really dawn on us as we went through the utility revenues. Oh, we need to increase interest because we don't normally, it was borrowed money. So you don't really think about it.
Right. But it's, but it's money that's there in that account.
It's there and we're making more than we're paying on it, which is unusual, but.
The beauty of inflation, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one question. At the, at the last board meeting, you had Tamika given us a Smith had given us a report on the surplus as of the second quarter. I think there was something that said it was about 6 million surplus as of this.
That's we were, that was revenues ahead of expenditures.
Revenues, all right.
It's not technically a surplus at that.
Okay, revenues and expenditures. Is that, is that on pace for normal? Is that a normal per, like if you go back halfway through the year, is that something that's normally that worth 6 million?
That sounds high. We normally are underspending at the, at the six months. So that is normal. Revenues are normally somewhat under 50% collected and we're usually somewhere in the 40% expended expended on a general fund normally.
So what would you say normally that would, that number would be for, for millions?
Man, probably somewhere in that. We're, I think we're running ahead. I mean, I, you know, but I, till we get to December, I mean, June 30th, that's a, not, you know, not really a, that's just a paper number, not a real one.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Seeley? Mr. Andrew, you have some more?
Yes, sir.
Sloan? I had a couple, Mr. Question, Mr. Cully. One is the budget for 24 is based on tax revenue collections in December 23 and June 24, correct?
Correct.
So this additional revenue that we see based on the increase in vehicles.
Could be not there in June of 24.
23 I'm talking about.
I know, but I'm saying.
Well, before you get ahead of me. It's 23. If there are increases in the number of vehicles right now today, we should probably see some increase in revenue received in June 23.
Correct.
So this would not possibly reflect, reflect that number, right?
Correct. We're, when we, it's, it's an interesting concept to grasp. Taxes are yearly.
Right.
Real estate and personal property, the budget splits that by starting July 1.
That's why I started with December and then June of 24.
You, you're budgeting, looking ahead to what you're going to collect, not in for 24, I'm not worried about what collect in June. That's already in this year's budget. So there'll probably be a bump there that'll be left over in fund balance.
That's, that's the point. So we will due to this growth that that we're projecting for next year's budget, we know that this growth will affect this year's budget because in June, there is a tax collection.
Correct. And that's one of the reasons that you don't, I don't feel bad with the, you know, the 1.9 to 2.5 million balancing number from the fund balance because I, I assume with the growth that we've been seeing over the last few years, that won't be necessary. It's just a balance and a balance and number of where the revenues aren't where our expenditures are.
The other, the other point is it's, it's 900,000 and we probably have a collection rate of 90% or somewhere in that case.
Yeah, better than, I think it's better than that, but that's a Beth question, but yeah, I think it's better than that.
I don't see Beth, but.
She's not my ass.
Then I can't see that far, so.
Yeah, she's probably, huh, she probably, she's probably on YouTube.
But if it's 90%, we would, we would get 810,000.
Man, we'd still get right much of it.
So we'd still get a big majority. All right, that's, that's one of the main reasons that I wanted us to start doing these quarterly reports again because it gives us a better idea of where we are and what things are changing.
Agree 100%.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Seeley.
The increase in personal property tax revenue is still due to inflated used car prices, correct? I see, Mr. Masun.
It's, it's about a 6% growth. They did, I asked them to do a comparison on people that had the same vehicle. So if you had a truck, you had the same truck. It's down from what your tax bill was last year. Not necessarily a lot, but you have the same car, car year over year has gone down.
But do we expect it to go down again?
We do. I expect personal property.
So if it goes down again, this number could actually be.
It could go down.
I mean, I understand we have more vehicles. I'm just looking at, we looked at huge inflated prices.
Correct. They're gonna, there, there is, the market's correct. And I think everything you see, you know, the market's correct. And you, if you watch any, you know, local TV, there are a lot of car dealers running specials with, you know, 0.9 financing, 0% financing for 60 months. There's a lot of that stuff going on, wasn't going on in the fall. So it's, it's definitely the car markets turn, the inflation's causing people not to have the and plus if you go to bar money to buy a car now with interest rates as high as they are, it really adds hundreds of dollars to your, your car payment. So people are just not able to pay the inflated prices that it was in, in the used market especially.
I just don't want to bank on this, this increased number of values are going to go down again. We're going to see some. Not that it's going to go away, but it's going to go down. It's not going to stay where it's at, even though we've got increased vehicles that'll all be a year older next year. And if the prices come down, then we're going to be sort of, where are we? That's, that's all I was looking for.
And that's where I started when, when I was, when I said, yes, next June, the last payment in this budget we're talking about may be different when we run the book next year. If we, if, say it crashes for some reason, we, we could really be hurt by that, but.
But we set the tax rate before we do that.
Which are correct. And so if we came back and said, oh, we're down $2 million in personal property because the values have gone down. Remember, we did lower the.
We could equalize the rate.
Yeah, we lowered the rate 35 cents, but.
Well, that's a good follow up question because that's, that's, that's kind of what I do and I'm, I'm a nerd, so I'm not going to apologize, but we're not going to do another download for December.
No.
This is the only download we do this year.
They do monthly downloads for proration.
Right, for proration.
Right.
But the book is as is right now.
Right.
So, so really what, what the Commissioner of Revenue's office is saying is when they got all of the vehicles from, from DMV, most of the existing cars, probably their value went down a little bit. But there was such growth in new cars or people with old cars buying newer cars that now we see this additional revenue.
Correct.
Again, back to my original point, this additional revenue, we will see some bump in June of 23.
Correct, because it's billed out right now.
Because it's billed out for now.
Correct.
Are these yearly numbers or these are numbers for the quarter?
Year.
The 900,000.
That's a year. That is a year. We're looking at, when the budget time, we're looking at, at per year. All these figures that I gave you were budget related and are yearly, yearly for the budget.
So theoretically, I can say if it's 900,000 and we get 90%, that's 800,000. If it's half a year, it's 400,000.
Correct.
Is the bump we would probably be able to project.
Correct. And we may end up with that, that could be a bump that goes away in next June. So, you know.
Well, no. See, we set the tax rate before June, so it's not going to go away.
If you don't change the rate.
Yeah. All right. That's a, that's a big point. We're all clear there?
All right, Clay? Mr. Forehand?
One quick question. The business personal property, is this all wrapped up in the same number or is that a separate lineup?
No, so I think personal property and I'm a little, is that in, all in this number? They're the experts. I remember I just look at the numbers.
It's what helps to have them here. So thank you. Thank you all for being here.
It really depends on the question. The business, business personal property, we didn't cover in what was asked of us because that can change up or down depending on whether the business either removes equipment or sells, sells the equipment or gains equipment. No, it does not come from DMV, no.
Okay, but that, that, that value is in. We're just looking at a personal property that's included in the number that we have. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. And we've done, we've had some growth in business personal property from our economic development efforts.
Yeah, typically across the board, outside of the kind of the last two years of anomalous stuff, we typically have a three to 5% increase in pretty much all the categories for the most part. Yeah, just vehicles in particular, motor vehicles, cars, trucks have been, I think between 21 and 22, we had an increase motor vehicles of roughly 250 and this year it's closer to 900.
Wow.
So it's, it's, it's a steep increase in total number.
All those people that moved into the area finally registered their vehicles locally.
Yeah, it's a combination of that. And then with values, values going down, people, people are probably purchasing more. We've been definitely been seeing more purchase this year compared to.
We don't have the emissions tests and all other stuff.
Right.
So where a lot of the things came from.
All right, before you leave, just in curiosity, we set the. All right, before you leave, um, just in curiosity, we set the tax rate this year and then you ran the DMV book or whatever it is, right?
Well, we typically, so we get the annual download, January fifteenth, so we've already worked that by the time that you guys set the rate. And we also work week, weekly downloads from there on out all year long.
Okay.
Yeah.
What I wanted to make sure is what, what Mr. Cully was referencing in June twenty-four, that the possibility of the rate or the values being much lower, and you'll know ahead of time, like we did last year, when we knew ahead of time that the values were really high, so we tried to equalize it then.
Correct. Yeah, we'll, we'll know well ahead of time what, what NADA values are going to be looking like.
And Mr. Chairman, the, the issue for me is when the values are inflated, the citizen takes the hit. When the value decreases, if we're not careful and we adjust the rate properly, we try to equalize it, they still take a hit. So I want to make sure that we're fair to the taxpayer, that we're looking at a rate that is fair to them so they're not getting hit whether the value is high or the value decreases, that we're not trying to recoup the same dollar amount, even though there's depreciation in the value of the vehicle. And yet we increased the rate to, that was a compensate. I don't want that to happen.
And, and I use the analogy of equalizing, which is the real estate numbers we have, which may not apply to personal property tax, but it was the same concept. So we could all understand.
Right.
It's, it's not that we have to make Mark pay five thousand dollars for his brand new car, and then we lower the rate and he still pays five thousand dollars. It's trying to make it fair, but you stepped up to say something, Mr. Masun.
To segue into that too, and we're talking about the collections in June, um, I wanted to remind the board, everyone that with proration, when cars are coming in throughout the year, although we do weekly downloads, the law says we have to use what that value was as of January one, unless it's a twenty twenty-three vehicle, which NADA doesn't have all that, then we use the cost of the purchase price that they put into DMV. So the values for everything coming into the county throughout the year will be based on the value as of January one's figures, um, because we are proration. So the revenue stream for vehicles coming in throughout the year, um, will remain with that January one value, and that is key for the December bill. So there will still be an uptick, possible uptick in dollar amounts.
That's kind of interesting, Mr. Masun. If I, if I have a car, January first, nineteen eighty-five, whatever, and now I sell it in December, I don't get that year's depreciation because it's prorated. I get charged whatever it costs January first.
Correct. Yeah, that's a state law. Our hands are tied behind our backs on that one. That's statewide law.
Okay. That's, yeah, I'm not surprised, but, um, I don't think that's fair.
I, yeah, I, I don't think most people would disagree with you. Unfortunately, yeah, that is what the state law says. That is tax day, January one, and that's what the assessments are, have to be based on.
Okay. Alrighty, um, while these gentlemen are here, any questions then? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, Mr. Cully? Yes, what is the revenue value for one penny in tax rate?
Three thirty-four.
Three thirty-four.
I was going to say three twenty-six, but I couldn't remember. Three thirty-four.
I knew it was three, three, three something, three, three, four is good to remember now. So you just discovered one point five million dollars in.
Three cent.
Revenue sources, one point five million, right? So.
We, we, but not in the general fund, but yes, one, one point five in new revenue.
One point five in new revenue.
In the general fund.
In the general fund. The, the, the million or the nine hundred thousand for personal property, the hundred thousand uh, somewhere else.
B pole was up two hundred, but we're going down with another one. So the net was at one point.
Interest funds we found, so that's one point five total.
Correct.
Which.
But that crosses funds, so.
Right. Three thirty-three goes into that, what, four and a half times, almost five, four and a half?
Three, three times three.
Three times five is fifteen.
Oh, you wanted the one point five. Oh, I was going into the one, I was going into the one million. Yeah, no, you're going.
Four and a half.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith, you can check my math. I think it's four and a half. It's just a guess. So we, we discovered the equivalent of a four and a half cent tax increase for just this year, right?
Yes, we, and.
Yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
Except that we are, according to Mr. Cully, one, one million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars into the fund balance with the current budget. I mean, we can't lose sight of.
That's right.
We are into the fund balance to balance the budget that we've got. So even though we found revenue.
No, you're missing, you're, you're missing the point. If we had, we had raised taxes five cents, we basically found that five cents right now, if we don't do anything else with the money. That's what I'm saying. Now, you've made recommendations, which I guess the board can discuss.
That's up, that's completely up to you.
Because those are your recommendations, the board can, can do what you, uh, recommend, or we can do something else, or we cannot decide to do it now. But, but my point was just the pure numbers of what a five cent tax increase would have been just for this year, and we've managed to discover that money based on additional analysis and the fact that our commissioner's office found six percent growth.
Correct.
Okay, and we'll, we'll, we will see a bump in some of that in June.
Correct.
Okay. Now, Mr. Sealy, your point of the fund balance is another story, if you'd like to elaborate on that some more.
Well, I understand that we found, we found, I, I like.
Discovered.
Discovered?
Yeah.
Okay, we discovered, um, but I think we can't lose sight of the fact that the budget is built on a two point five hun, two million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars is what we were going into the fund balance to balance the budget we've got. So with the newly discovered revenue, and if we allocate that the way it's being suggested, we're still one, one million, nine hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars into the unencumbered balance to balance this, this next year's budget, which, as Mr. Cully said, he's banking on growth, but if we don't get that, we then have the bond council to deal with because, you know, we still are obligated to be twelve to seventeen percent of the unencumbered balance as a percentage of the budget, the total budget, not just our side.
Yeah, total budget. The other thing is.
County budget, which counts schools.
Counts, right. The other thing they, um, don't like to see is where you're actually taking from the fund balance. If you're budgeting it and not taking from it, you can, but you start actually going into the fund balance year over year, then that's going to be a hit on your bond rating. Courtney, Courtney.
Mr. Cully?
Mr. Black?
Just, uh, so when we, after, at the end of last year, for last year's budget, what did we, did we go into the fund balance?
No, we were five million and change ahead.
So.
Most of that was personal property growth from the year before, before you lowered the rate.
Was there a prediction there to that we were going to go into the fund balance?
Yes.
There was, so was it, so last year, there was a prediction that we would go into the fund balance, and then we ended up having a five million dollar surplus.
But that's basically how budgets are done at the county level, period. You use the fund balance to balance the budget.
Number.
Yes. Because by law, we have to have a balanced budget.
Correct.
Right.
So when we use the fund balance to balance the budget, that's really a buffer that we hope we don't go into.
Right.
But and we didn't go into it last year.
Or the year before.
Or the year before.
But in previous budgets, have you always, I mean, I think you've been here about ten years, have you always on our budgets gone into the fund balance?
Yeah.
Yes, I've always balanced that up. I balanced into, I had a fund balance number in the middle section, so yes.
Yeah. So you've always said, all right, we're going to go into the fund, you've always budgeted that we're going to go into the fund balance.
Yeah, you can, you conservatively budget your revenue. So I could do the same thing by guessing the revenue's higher than they may come in.
Right, right, right.
And then they come in short and you go in the fund balance, you just don't put it in a number. So I try to give you realistic, as best we can, revenue numbers. So we have the expenditures, we can control those the best we can as the year is going along. Some of those become fixed cost.
So even, let me ask you a question because we haven't, um, in the years that we have raised taxes, we've had a couple of years where we raised them significantly. So even in those years when we said, hey, we're, I think we've had a four cent one, we've had a eleven cent one, or.
We had eleven.
Yeah, well, that was, because that was because of the referendum.
Yeah, the referendum, and sure, it was the same thing. That was all earmarked, yeah, that whole thing was earmarked away. So yes, we had a.
Even in those years that you, you went into the fund balance.
Remember, we went up eight, eight cents before, but I showed you in that budget that we needed eleven.
Right, 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 yeah.
And so that was balanced off the fund, fund balance too, to get, get us to, you know, pass that three cents we didn't have.
But in twenty twenty-one, we went into the fund balance eight hundred thousand, but because of the COVID funds that we used to offset the fire and rescue and sheriff's office, we actually came out ahead.
Correct.
So that's the five million dollars you're talking about, right?
That was that one. We, we came ahead last year, probably, too, but that was personal property.
Right.
It was just growth in revenue, everything was booming.
Yeah, the point that, that we can't lose sight of is because of the way the county has to budget, we always designate money from the unencumbered balance to balance the budget.
Yes, I like for it to be a whole lot smaller number than one point nine million. I'll tell you that, you know, million is a lot easier.
Yeah, the point is, and, and I'm, I'm going to give you a compliment, Mr. Cully, because I think since you've been here, you've done an excellent job with budgeting and, and finance. You budget revenue very conservatively, and then you budget expenditures just as conservatively too, but it gives us a little more buffer because I don't think there's ever been a year where we didn't hit our revenue targets.
Correct.
You know, so I think that's been a great thing, and that's helped us all along, and it, it made the county financial picture a lot better. And with Ms. Smith, we're in great shape now. So I appreciate the work that you both have done. Mr. Underwood had a question?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chairman, I think what happened is we had the eight cent tax increase, um, that I didn't agree for. Didn't agree with the budget, but we had the eight cent tax increase and I was adamantly against it. And it just so happened that we did get the additional funds, which we didn't anticipate, I didn't anticipate, but I was still against the tax increase, but we, we gained revenue and had a surplus.
That's part of, part of that is what Mr. Cully and I were going back and forth about is in June, we get an initial bump.
Correct.
That's because we set the tax rate, which wasn't accounted for.
Right.
So that's part of that money.
Right. And then COVID came.
We got some more.
And we got.
Five point two million.
For the next year, we got five point two million. So we still had that tax increase in there because we were still collecting the funds, but it just gave us additional cushion. But as it turns out, because of the need for firefighters and it actually worked to our favor to be conservative. So, well, I didn't agree with you, Mr. Cully. I, you know, I must tell you, I, I don't agree with the tax increase. I see if we have a tax increase, then it should neutralize itself in the budget is, is what I believe. And it didn't do that over the last couple of years, but I understand the factors which caused us to have such a, um, a positive, uh, number in terms of additional revenue. So, um, so I appreciate what you do as well. And, you know, I push you pretty hard, I'm sure, about the number, but I, I think you're doing an outstanding job as well. So I appreciate it.
The only thing I would add to that COVID year is when, if you can remember, we were budgeted in the spring of twenty, and the world was shutting down. We were all concerned about where revenues would be.
Yeah.
And one of the big surprises was that everybody stayed at home and ordered on Amazon, and the state had adopted the sales tax law. And we, our sales tax number shot up way more than we had ever anticipated, you know, in the budget. And our meals tax didn't take the hit we thought. And there were jurisdictions that were really hurt, you know, Fredericksburg and the, and the jurisdiction.
Carryout thing.
They had, yeah, they were hurt a lot, but because we were small, we weren't hurt as bad as some of those other, but we didn't know going in. So we were real conservative with those numbers, and then they went past what we, anything we'd ever seen. So, and then the feds gave us money as well.
Okay, so, so the point Mr. Black made was the last two years, we, we used the fund balance to balance the budget, but instead of using that money, we were able to add money to the fund balance.
That is correct.
What is the fund balance right now? Ms. Smith's right behind you.
That on a piece of paper.
That was the next question.
At June thirtieth of fiscal year twenty-two, the unassigned, undesignated fund balance number was twenty-eight million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, three oh three.
Twenty-eight million. And.
However, um, during this fiscal year, we have restricted some funds, um, two point five million for the Sparta Fire Station or Fire and EMS Capital Projects is what we called it, as well as we restricted three million dollars for, um, water and sewer projects. So about five point five of that has been restricted.
So twenty-two point.
So that gives us.
Twenty-two point five, twenty-two point six, okay.
Said twenty-three to make the math easy.
And what is the, what is the amount? So that's, that's twenty-two point six, that's unencumbered.
That's, that's the unencumbered, unassigned, and, and we don't, we don't know whether we get to count the restricted money as part of the encumbered or not, but.
No, you do not.
Okay.
And so what is.
Once it's, it's restricted, it falls in a different category.
One second. So what's the total county budget for, for fiscal year twenty-two?
So our financial policies require us to go by operating revenues.
Okay.
Um, so the operating revenues as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two were about ninety-one million.
Ninety-one million is operating revenue?
Yes, sir.
So.
We are required to have twelve percent.
Nine and four, I thought Jeff just said fifteen, or, or we said fifteen.
Our target is fifteen.
Thirteen to seventeen is what the policy is.
Our target is fifteen.
Our target is fifteen percent. Our required is twelve percent.
Okay, so ten percent of ninety-one is nine point one.
So we're twenty-five.
And half of that is four and a half. So thirteen, six is what we should have as the minimum.
Yes, sir.
You agree with that?
Yes, sir.
Is that math right?
Yes.
Okay.
We got, we got roughly twenty, twenty-four point eight percent?
Yes, sir.
When Courtney goes through those bond documents and shows you those comparisons to other counties.
Right.
There are a lot of them that are that way. And I want to point out, the fund balance is our only strong point.
Right.
We are off on every other one of the things that the bond agencies use to rate a county. Sorry, I'm not coming through. So please keep that in mind. Yes, we're, we're really strong on that, but that's why we have our bond rating. So if you get down anywhere near the bottom or fifteen or twelve, and our other numbers are all not even at where they should be, we're going to lose our bond rate. I know Courtney will tell you that.
And that's, I'm going to give Mr. Mr. Black the thing in a second, but that's part of what I wanted to accomplish today in our, in our first session is kind of make sure we all understand where we are, what we are expecting, and what we have to do. So, Mr. Black, go right ahead.
I just had, just for public record, so people know, what is, um, so yes, the, the, the fund balance is in excellent shape as far as, but we have other things dinging us, what is dinging us?
Uh, debt per capita and assessed value. That, I don't remember the exact term.
Assessed value, real estate?
Yeah, assessed value, real estate per, I'd have to get the report from Courtney, but there's two, there's three things they look at strongly. They look at other things, employment, growth, businesses, all those things, but they're three real strong points. And the one that carries us over is the really strong cash position we have. So when they're giving you this bond rating, so you go and borrow money, but you have a strong savings account, gives them comfort that you're not going to default on something. So the closer we get down to minimums, then all the other things are not strong, they're not going to rate us where we are. And then that just costs us in when we have to borrow money because we'll have a lower bond rating. But I can get that for you. It's in Courtney's bond book with its, it's three things.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Black done?
You know, what, what'd you say, so that per capita and what was the other one?
It's assessed, assessed value of the property, not per capita, but per the budget or something.
Thanks, thank you.
Mr. Forehand?
Um, Mr. Cully, as far as collateral, a couple of different things. A lot of the bonds that we have, like when we did the road project, or if we had to borrow money for the road project, they, we can't use the road for collateral. It's not like, it's not like personal lending, but we still have schools that are collateral on loans. Is that an accurate statement?
We, it seemed like to me, we did a financing when I first got here. We, it seemed like to me, we did a financing when I first got here.
Long time ago.
That used, uh, Bowling Green.
Yeah.
Bowling Green Elementary is a, is some, and we got the school board, because I remember going to a school board meeting to get their, their blessing on that.
I don't know the Y, we couldn't use the Y as collateral for its own loan, or we're still paying on that as well. So that's on.
I think that's, I think that's.
Unsecured school.
That might be the one, that might be the one, that's the one we, for the school.
That's the one that had the school in it.
Okay, so we, so we have Bowling Green Elementary as collateral for the YMCA? Okay. Just, um.
Yes.
But we don't have a lot of collateral.
We don't have really anything that doesn't have.
Excuse me.
And that's, I think, um. Mr. Forehand, that was the, the only way that we could get the loan. I think part of that was the reconstruction at Bowling Green. And the, the Y, they were all together. And the only way at that time we could get the loan was to use that school as a.
Right.
You know, collateral.
I know, it just sounds terrible when you say it, that's all.
It's, it's not like they were going to repossess it because we were, we weren't going to pay.
Agreed, agreed. But when you hear it, it just, it just stings.
The other thing is we could put the county administrative, uh, building up as collateral.
I think that's got a note on it.
Yeah. Cause we did a lot of renovations there.
Well, you borrowed money originally on that. So I think that's, I don't think we're sitting on anything we don't have some sort of note on.
Yeah, for the most part. But some of those will start coming down.
They start to come down.
We're sitting on cash that enabled us to use all of our structures as collateral, basically.
Right.
Now we're sitting on the cash for it and we kind of have to for the bond rating. Otherwise, because we don't own anything that doesn't have an encumbrance.
When you, when you borrowed money before I got here for the sewer plant, you had to put up a cash reserve.
Yes.
So that was, the, the borrowing was difficult in those days compared to the cash position we were in today. If we really wanted to do something, we're just running up against policies as Courtney's pointed out last year until twenty-seven. So. That was why I made the recommendation to, to buy the Amelants and the sheriff's vehicles and the brush truck. That when you remember, I had a pretty skinny CIP as it was, because I knew we couldn't really finance too much.
Right.
But those are things that are ongoing. I mean, you. Uh, somebody wears Amelances out pretty regularly. So, you know, you know, we knew we needed that. So I, um, and, and, and. They've gone up from like one fifty-nine to three hundred.
Even, even my time in the board, they used to be, you know, two ten and now we're paying over three hundred.
Three hundred. And it's not that we're getting more frills, it's basically just gone up.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Kelly, um. I haven't looked at every revenue stream, but have, are we still pursuing the cigarette tax? And is that?
Oh, yeah, that's in there. That's in there. That's in there. Yes.
Even though we haven't passed it yet, it's just, it's anticipated for.
No, it's passed. Y'all adopted it. We're collecting money. I've gotten, uh, somebody give me a number.
Is it? I was thinking that was the first reading.
It's supposed to be three hundred.
We, we just. My apologies. I, I was, I was, uh.
It started in March.
Future, I was.
No, we just sold our first case, thirty-six in a case at six thousand dollars apiece, two hundred sixteen thousand dollars in the first two months. And that doesn't include, um, the self-adhesive stamp. So we're about nine hundred, maybe a thousand dollars in. Self adhesive. And that was just the first order from all of the twelve, um, wholesalers.
Yeah, because you started in March.
Yes, sir.
So we will only have quarter and a half. Okay. Of revenue, but that's.
I don't know where I.
Yeah, pretty good.
It's four hundred and fifty budgeted and, and it's all testamental. So as we start. And, and just because he sold that in the first two months, we don't know how long that'll take them to sell those cigarettes and boxes.
They're getting their stock up. So.
But we do have four hundred and fifty thousand in revenue. We, we searched the revenue hard to try to find every nickel.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Ms. Smith, what's, what's? Twenty-three is what percentage of ninety-three, of ninety-one?
Twenty-three.
Did we just say that? Was it, was it twenty-four? Twenty-two point six.
Mm-hmm, twenty-four point eight percent.
Twenty-four point eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're at twenty-four point eight. Our policy is fifteen. Mr. Cully believes that our financial advisor wants it to stay where it is. Okay. We're close. And, and our budget. Without this money we, we just located was two point five million removed from the. Fund balance.
Correct. That is correct.
Which would get us down to twenty-one.
Worst case scenario. So yeah, I would be, uh, I wouldn't, I would be shocked if we hit that. I mean, it'd be very, revenues would have to really go. Underwater. And I think we would know that before that and try to cut spending every way we could, but. Yes. Yeah. I mean, we could go in the fund balance, that is possible, but I wouldn't expect to go in it. More than a million dollars. I think if I told Courtney I was going in two and a half million, he'd be upset.
If it went in this two and a half million, it would drop us down to twenty-three percent. It would drop us down to twenty-three percent if we took, does, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, and it's not percentage you're going to look at. It's that we went in.
Okay.
According to Courtney. They don't like us going into fund balance. Budgeting, like I said, the paper number and not going in is one thing, but going in, they don't like. And I'm not saying they're going to drop you if you do it one year, but you would have to correct that and not go in two years in a row.
And again. The same financial advisor said we had pretty much come up against our borrowing limit.
Correct.
Based on everything else.
Correct.
What, what are the reasons he gave us for that again?
Policy, all of our policy reasons where your payoff, you know, you have to have fifty-three percent. They like to be paid off in a number of years out and all those things so that till some things pay down in twenty-seven, that's when we give us the headroom to borrow.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for Courtney, but he made a, a presentation on all that and that's the takeaway.
Ms. Smith, do you have the county debt number? I, I think you gave us that before. I don't know if you're prepared to do it now. I.
She doesn't have that one.
Okay, that's fine. That's.
Yeah, it was doing or some.
She, she sent it to us via email. Yeah.
Anybody got a computer?
I do.
Uh, you might be able to find it. That's principal. That's principal.
Okay. I, I have another question because that, that affects our budget, which is totally different. Mr. Fincham, can you help me for a second, please? I think since we've got all these folks here, we might as well ask them all questions. So Mr. Wilson will be next. I was at the Belmont HOA meeting last week.
Yes, sir.
And somebody made a presentation called Belmont West.
Okay.
You look as surprised as I was. Um, do you remember that? It was like sixty-three houses or something like that?
Yes, uh. Atlantic Homes built, I believe it was sixty-three, sixty-five townhouses.
Um, no, this is, this is brand new houses that they expect to come now or next year.
We have, you have Belmont North One, which is five hundred and twenty-six units.
That's the one that they're talking about coming back to the board for.
Yes, you have Belmont North Two, which was a seventy-five unit townhouse project. Uh, off of Cool Water Drive. Um, and then you have Belmont West, which is part townhouses, part multifamily, which has not been built yet.
That's the one then. And, because he talked about sixty-three houses. There was a question about getting the utility lines out to his property.
Mm-hmm.
But, but my question is, is that project in our utility plan? I guess that's kind of between you and Mr. Steve.
It's in a growth area. Um, any utility extensions would be the responsibility of the developer.
Right. Well, what I'm looking for is water and sewer connections are considered county revenue.
Yes, sir.
So are those water and sewer connections in our budget that you know of?
No. Because we have not seen, uh, a, a preliminary site plan, um, on those sixty-three units, to my knowledge.
No, it'll happen next fiscal year. Which will be part of it. They're not in the budget now. That would be additional revenue in. The twenty-four actual numbers.
Assuming the construction market remains.
Right.
Decent.
Lot of assumptions.
We are seeing downward pressure.
Yeah, a lot of assumptions involved, but I just thought there was another. Possibility of more connections. So I just wanted to confirm with you. And, you know, the developer said, we don't have to do anything with the county because it's already been approved and.
Zoning wise, that would be yes. They would still need site plan approval.
Yeah, there was. Close to two thousand houses. I thought I knew each one, but I guess I don't. So this new section that. Doesn't have to come to the county, will just go to planning for site plan. And then they, they can start building if they find people to, to buy the houses they're building.
Yeah, site plan includes utilities, roads, uh, stormwater through DEQ, et cetera.
Okay. Well, they've got a, they've got to get an easement from the HOA, so I'm not sure it'll be next year, but I would hope it helps our connections.
Yeah, if it were me, I would not be counting on that sixty-three connections.
Do you have?
Good.
Do you have the, the Bridlewood connections? Bridlewood is, uh, the, the new section of Bridlewood. They've already timbered on Lady Smith Road. So they've already cut down those trees. Are those, are those homes that are Bridlewood's building in that?
Um, I think we have to ask Joey whether he included that in his connection figures.
Mr. Shebel is shaking his head and yelling, I did not.
We, are they, I mean, I'm just curious, are they planning on, I mean, because they've timbered it?
Yes.
So they're planning on starting to build this year?
Probably early in the next fiscal year. I know, um, Mr. Shebel has some utility comments. I believe they've had to go back and correct. And we are still working on acquiring the.
So summer of twenty, summer of twenty-three or summer of twenty-four?
They could conceivably be under construction. Later in, or, or in the next fiscal year. So that would be summer, summer to fall of twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that service number she sent last was, was just, um, dumb. So we don't have total. Okay. All right, um, Mr. Cully?
Email before that one.
Oh. Okay. Anything you would like to give us, um, about projections? For the budget, revenue projections, any impact things you can think of right now?
No, the only thing I would add to your discussion about, um, utility connections, we looked at that. Mr. Sheba and I talked about that with the downturn in the economy and mainly, mainly only Pendleton building. We, we lowered that down and we're. Hopeful that we will reach the, the connection. So I wouldn't go too far up with those or that one. Because that becomes, what that is, is general fund transit. It just changes the, you know, if you don't get those connections, it's more money from the general fund to. Pay debt service because operations of utilities is paid for, but it's the debt that's not.
Yeah, before you got here, that was done. So.
Yeah.
And it, it didn't pan out. So it wasn't a good thing. Mr. Forehand, you have another question?
Mr. Kelly, li- looking at, um, our jail and juvenile detention, juvenile, it's increased eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in three years. Is that? Inflation? Are we incarcerating more people?
Alan will have to answer in detail, but I think part of that is inflation, um, and the costs to run the jail have gone up.
For juvenile detention, it's based on a five-year average. And then they factor in what it takes to, to run the facility and, um, population's actually been down, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the. Your expenses to, to run it because it's not down enough to hire less people. So.
Okay. Cause that was, that was my follow-up question. Like if we had some crime spree and we incarcerated ten more people. Now, are we going to get an additional bill? You know, our ADM is up, you know?
Right. That's the beauty of the five-year average.
Okay.
Smooths that out.
All right.
A crime spree and we arrest ten people?
Just saying. I'm just throwing an example. We, we bust a major trafficking ring and. We've got fifteen more people in Pumonkey Regional Jail, you know?
That's a per diem. So that one is, Pumonkey is a per diem. So we put more people in there, we pay more per day, per diem. So that.
So that does go up.
That does go up if we arrest, uh, incarcerate more people, um.
But I've never seen a balanced number come back around. Are we always?
They're, they're expensive. Their expenses at, at the jail have gone up. So they adopt a budget, of which we're with Ashland and Hanover. So we're, you know, a, a member. But, you know, Ashland and Hanover can team up against us if they want to. But anyway, and it's located in Hanover, so they sort of, the, the big boys in the room. So they adopt their jail budget and then we pay on a average per diem, projected per diem of what we've been running. Um, and their costs are up. I mean, the jail officers, food, medical, ev- everything is skyrocketed in jail, jail cost. Like, like everything else.
I was in shock that it was eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I wasn't real thrilled, but that's, that's the adopted budget and that's our share.
Yeah, okay.
And we pay that quarterly.
Okay.
And they true it up at the end of the, end of the year. So.
So there is a balancing number that comes back out?
So, yes. Yeah, sometimes we get some money back. So there've been times where we've gotten sixty to ninety thousand back. There's, you know, that type of thing.
What's the other one that we use? We use Pumonkey and what else?
Um, Merrimack Juvenile Center, eighteen, eighteen jurisdictions in that. And that's the one has a, they went to about three or four years ago before COVID, maybe a five-year rolling average.
Okay.
Which does kind of level us. We don't see the spikes because in juvenile you did. It didn't take much.
Right.
You like a three juveniles that you, more than you normally had and you had this huge increase. And then it would drop off when they would get through the judicial process.
Yeah, that, that's where, there was a fight at the school and you could find ten kids that got arrested. And then we pay per day.
Yeah, per day, yes.
Okay, um. I think that was it for Mr. Mr. Wilson, since you're here. You have to be the bearer of good news because your economic development. You, you have to be the bearer of good news. So we're setting the stage for you. Um. What I would like to give you an opportunity to mention the, the many projects that are. About to happen, um, that the county will see some impact in our fiscal year upcoming. That you can tell us about, like, um. The ones in the Carmo Church area.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I, I hear Mr. Kelly back here saying this is built into the budget. As, as you're presented. Uh, world-class distribution. Uh, is a two hundred and seventy-four million dollar investment for the county. Uh, will create a thousand jobs with payroll of approximately thirty-eight million dollars. Um, this is particularly advantageous to us, uh, not only because of the property tax that's involved with that. But, uh, that payroll actually will be spent somewhat in the county gas, meals taxes, sales taxes. Uh, people have to go to lunch, um, buy groceries and so forth. So that, that will be a, an impact for us. That's a very positive one. Um, Lingerfelt Development, uh, it's on our books and planning and it just about. Uh, to make an official announcement of a larger building in that area as well. And there should be more revenue from that building. Uh, it's possible that they can get it built within, uh, this next fiscal year. Uh, so it'd be possible to tax that. There's some retailing that we anticipate in Route six thirty-nine, for example. Um, once, since the board, uh, wisely invested in Route six thirty-nine, what it did. Is it allowed the opportunity for businesses to set up on that road. Otherwise, the cost of doing business to. To the off-site improvements that were required were too expensive for any one business to take on. So since this has been done, we've seen the sheets, there's going to be a Wendy's built next to that. There is another retail anticipated next to that. Um, and across the street, the southern side of six thirty-nine. Um, it's well known that Wawa intends to be there. There are also a couple of other retail businesses we believe will be there. Um, this is not just dividing up the pie. This is bringing more money off the interstate. Because it gives drivers, travelers more opportunity to make choices that they like. While they're here, they'll be able to spend money and. While they're here, they'll be able to spend money in different places, which will enrich the county further. Uh, we always envisioned Route, uh, rather ninety-five being like a river of money running by us that we need to be somehow dip into to take into the county, and these retail opportunities allow us to do that. Uh, we see the potential for other retail, uh, we're having conversations this very week in, in that regard. Uh, so we'll really talk about it. We see significant other, um, industrial investments uh, coming down the, the pipeline, so that will be very lucrative for us. But I can't tell you about the timing exactly, and then we have a number of high-value projects that we're working on. Again, timing, a little difficult to say about that, but, uh, I, I can tell you that our big problem right now is we're running out of land um, in, in growth areas, and we need to start thinking seriously about extending past the current growth areas because we simply don't have a lot of marketable pieces left. Um, and I'll be giving the board some mapping information on that soon, but, uh, oh, I beg your pardon, yes, MCD, uh, is, is there an expansion this year? I should have mentioned that. Uh, they've been on my, my, uh, front burner for quite some time. Uh, they're a hundred and sixty-eight thousand square foot building, uh, they're talking about doing another building next year, so this is almost like three years in a row that they're just opening new buildings, they're doing such a great job, four hundred technology jobs at MCD in the county, the people don't know of it because it's tucked away, but it's a gem for our community. Uh, and they have another three hundred acres that's virtually under contract now, so, um, again, like I said, we're running out of land.
Well, thank you. Anybody have a question for Mr. Wilson?
Is there any talk of a grocery store coming to us? Like another one besides Food Lion?
That's a great question.
It's a no.
That, that's.
Yeah.
My options are Food Lion and Food Lion and then Food Lion. I can go to Bowling Green and go to Food Lion, or I can go to Lay Smith and go to Food Lion, so.
We're covered, we monopolize the Food Lion opportunities.
It was really.
Uh, that's a great question because I, I get that all the time, and I love it when the citizens call and ask about that. Why can't we have a Wegmans, or something, or a Publix, uh, or something along that line? The answer is simple, it's market-based, the decisions these companies make are market-based. They have their own criteria for making these decisions. We call them, they know exactly what's going on in Caroline County. They know what's going on everywhere, that's their job to find the next great market for their business. And if they are not building, it's because they've already made a decision. Um, we can't talk them into it, uh, because it's, it's cut and dried for them what they require.
Oh, trust me, we have tried to talk them into it.
Indeed.
The response that we've gotten over and over again is you don't have enough rooftops. And if we add more rooftops, we've got more issues, so we're going to keep trying, we've got a couple, uh, opportunities maybe, so we'll keep trying. All right, no other questions from Mr. Wilson, thank you. So Mr. Colley, he told us about all sorts of great things, and you're going to tell us they're all in the budget?
Lingon Felder's not, I don't think we, we discussed that because we don't, I don't think I have enough information, but uh, world-class distribution, which is, I mean, a million two square foot, we worked with the commissioner, and when the temporary CO is issued on that, then it, that's, we've got revenue in, it's not the full amount, but pretty close, uh, that we figure we pick that up.
So once their certificate of occupancy is granted, they're officially on the books? And we, we don't send them a tax bill that day, do we?
Oh, no, 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 it'll, um, once we get the permit, uh, temporary approval, final approval, whatever it may be, um, I send that out to the commercial assessor, once it comes back to us, we bill it back from the time the permit was approved. So it may take a month to get it assessed correctly or whatever, but the billing starts from the day of the occupancy.
So that's another proration?
Sort of, kind of, yeah, sort of, we didn't leave it out because we knew it was, that's, you know, huge building, so.
Mr. Bissoum, when they start having their trucks, equipment, personal property, that'll just be at a later time and.
Yes, once they change their garage jurisdictions to Caroline County and DMV, we picked that up in a DMV download, and then when we send out our business personal property filing forms, they will declare their business personal property at that time so we can pick it up. Um, if it's not here on January one, we don't get it, but if it comes in September and they start filling it up, January one, we'll pick it up. And outside of that, all this construction Mr. Wilson's talking about too, please, when, um, when I say business personal property, when these contractors come in, we work close with planning and zoning as well to pick up the equipment that these folks are bringing in because those contractors will be paying on B pole if they go over a certain amount, and we pick up their business personal property while it's here in Caroline County as of January one. So if they come here in September, we won't get them, but if they, if that equipment's still here on January one, they now have to declare it in Caroline County, so we work close with, uh, EDA and planning on that.
Okay, before you go, Mr. Bissoum, the Carmel Church Fire Station started in November, I think we had the groundbreaking. They've been over there since December with heavy equipment on site. The contractors.
If the, if we have the permit, which I'm sure we do, we've already communicated with them and they have all their stuff declared with us. And also we work close with Mr. Whiteman as well, so to make sure that the contractor's there, that he's going back and checking our right with my office.
So, so contractors from out of the county who bring their heavy equipment in and leave it in the county have to pay B pole on all that equipment that stays in the county, is what you're saying?
Business personal property.
Business personal property tax.
And then they'll pay B pole if they cross thresholds. Three hundred, three hundred thousand for in-area, twenty-five for out-of-area contractors. So if, let's just use D R Horton, for example, if they come in as a general and then they have all these, well, let's use the Carmel Church, the the world, what is it, in, world-class distribution. When they came, general pulled the contract, they had like eighteen subs underneath of them. We were, we worked close with Mr. Whiteman to make sure all those subs from Michigan or wherever they came from because these people have their own people that they network with, we make sure and get with them, presidents of the companies, CEOs of the company.
Because they're out of state.
Because they're out of state.
But if in-state, you can't charge them B pole again, can you?
But we charge them B pole if they go over three hundred thousand. In the county.
So they're paying B pole in two places?
No.
The contractor?
Well, whatever they do in Caroline County, they'll remit for Caroline County, whatever they do in their home localities, they, or whatever other locality, they pay each locality what they do.
So it's like athletes who pay state tax in whatever place they play in?
We have a running spreadsheet of these folks that, um,
Okay.
You know, if they build up, some of them won't cross the threshold, but if they, if they're working on fifteen houses in Lady Smith Village, the same, the same carpenter, and once they cross that twenty-five thousand threshold, that's us. Now, if they go back to Henrico County and start building within the same year, or wherever else, that doesn't affect us, that locality gets it.
Okay, did you have something you want to add, Mr. Stevens? Oh. Mr. Colley, you were back for?
Questions.
Oh, I just thought you had something to say, okay.
And I just shoved him aside.
Well, he is the one who sets the values.
Oh, yes, I'm, they, they, they going after everybody they can find on those type of things because we've worked at many of, many a meeting on that to make sure we're coordinating, building permits and what's going on so that they can capture that.
I, I had no idea, that's how it works, so it's kind of good to know. All right, how does, uh, Mr. Black?
I just had, uh, a couple of questions and maybe Ms. Stevens from the schools, if you don't mind, we bring that up or, um, I just had a couple of questions in regards to, I think in the budget for the schools, you had roughly eight hundred thousand in unencumbered money or they're getting, basically it's not, that's not a, uh.
It was seven hundred and sixty-two, it was five percent, five percent more in their transfer to operations.
And I know that they gave it to.
There's other things for buses and things like that.
Yeah.
That, that's what gets up today.
And I know the schools gave, um, us some information, I don't have it with me, it's at the house, but what does that, what did they need, what did the schools need, maybe Ms. Stevens, you can answer this. What is the seven fifty-two get them? I guess I'm trying to look at, with the seven fifty-two, what are they getting for the teachers? Because, um, just kind of curious what that would, what that would do for them, and I know there was some stuff that they had in their budget that they were going to do without without.
It would be on their plan.
Yeah, right.
Ms. Stevens, I'd, thank, thank you for coming, I hadn't planned on calling you, but glad you're here.
Good evening. Based on the budget, Mr. Black, we will have to rework our entire budget. At the time, we were at a four point four, seven million dollar gap. Therefore, we'll reduce the seven, so we'll be down to three point six million dollar gap. With the skinny budget, we, um, were anticipating a net increase of revenue of state funding of three hundred and fifty-three thousand. With the skinny budget passing, we went down to a net increase of sixty-six thousand from the state. So we lost almost three hundred grand.
I, I guess, and we can discuss this, I guess my concern is from, and I understand there's no, there's no way, I mean, and, and I'm one voter for that the, the four million that I asked for, that's, that's, um, to me, that's an untameable number, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I just can't go to the citizens and say, hey, we need four million dollars. But I would maybe, and if, I don't know if we have planned to meet again or something, but I would just like to know, for example, there was a lot of teachers that came here in front of us the other night um, at our, at our public hearing. And, you know, I'm a teacher myself, so I, I can completely sympathize with, um, you know, teacher, teacher salary and um, when you hear teachers that have been here for twenty years and they're saying they're going to food banks, um, I, I, you know, I think that's something that we really need to look at as far as, uh, what the salary is and uh, I'd like to, I don't know if there's a way of numbers, like for example, what gives them, I know that the state, the state still has that plan for the, um, five percent, right? In other words, we have to match it, the state gives the SOQ teachers the five percent. Just out of curiosity, what is the, to do the five percent, what is the cost? If you're going to do the teachers the five percent, what is, what would be the, what would be, what would you need for the income to do that?
Certainly, so looking at, and I only have projections at this time because we're having, um, the software vendor did some updates, so we're having to rework the budget, and I've been working with them the past two days, but we're at one point eight million estimate for a five percent increase for all staff. I'm looking at the House bill for SOQ, it's one point two two million. Um, the local match required is six hundred and thirty-four thousand. Based on the prevailing rates that the state is at compared to the Caroline salaries, the state and the local match for SOQ is basically paying an entire five percent for all of our staff other than we're short fifty thousand. So that's showing how low our rates are compared to the prevailing rate that the state SOQ funded positions, which is about half of our positions. We're able to give a five percent raise to all of our staff with just an additional fifty thousand required.
So what's the one point eight do then? You said a one point eight, what would that do? I guess I'm confused, I mean, I guess I'm lost, so you're saying to me that fifty thousand will get you the five percent, and then I heard one point eight million, so there's, so what's the one point eight versus the fifty thousand?
An additional fifty thousand for, to cover the non, the non-SOQ positions is what? So the state funding, the required local match of six hundred and thirty-four thousand, we just need the fifty thousand more to make it one point eight to get a five percent increase in there for all staff.
Fifty more from what we, uh, fifty more from what we've budgeted for you or?
No, sir, fifty more than the six hundred and thirty-four, so based on what you budgeted, we are at that seven sixty-seven. So we have been asking for people over things. Um, so any funding that we would receive from you would be going towards people, would be going towards compensation increases. And we can do a five percent based on the state revenues with the funding that has been provided to us.
All right, so let me just make sure, because I want to make sure that I'm, I'm, I'm tired, and, and so right now you plan a few, fifty thousand more, you can do the teachers in the county staff, five percent, is that what you're saying right now?
Yes.
So then any addition.
Wait, fifty thousand more?
Then the required local match.
Of the six thirty-four? So you need six eighty-four?
Correct, is what we would need if we're talking the one point eight million.
Based on the state giving you one point eight this year?
Correct.
In the budget that they haven't approved yet.
Correct.
Which won't be approved until.
It's the skinny budget, so it is approved, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going back.
So the seven sixty-eight already covers the six fifty plus the fifty thousand. So we're, we're already above the, the seven hundred thousand that you need by sixty-eight thousand, correct?
Correct, for five percent.
For five percent, so we're sixty-eight thousand above, I'm just making sure because I'm looking, Mr. Colley's number for schools, just for just for operations was seven sixty-eight. And you're saying you need seven hundred, because you're saying six fifty plus fifty. So we're there plus sixty-eight thousand additional dollars.
You are there, if you are only looking at a five percent, we know five percent is not going to move Caroline.
Right, okay.
And it's not going to cover fuel increases, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I, I'm with you, I just, I, I got you. So now, any additional money, I guess, so beyond the seven hundred, any additional money would be used for?
We have been saying compensation.
Compensation.
There are some things that I will need to increase, fuel is one.
Okay.
And we have no increases other than in our budget, this time we had, um, Chromebooks, that they're going to have to come off the table. Other than that, there was absolutely the, no increases in the budget, other than compensation and the positions that we provided you.
Is there a way that, um, just a, we, we're not voting on anything tonight, are we? We don't plan on voting on it, okay. All right, I, I guess, is there a way that you could, um, get for me? For example, and I know you've, I, we were inundated with a lot of it, and I appreciate what Dr. Calverick does, she does an excellent job. But, uh, we were inundated with a lot of data and information from you guys earlier. Is there a way we could very simply say this is, you know, uh, you know, I like my graphic organizers and five percent, we're there, six percent, this is what it costs, seven percent, and then with the capital cost too, like for example, Chromebooks, is there a way that you could just give me a very simple chart, this is what gets us where with this kind of county money?
Absolutely.
But that would require prioritized now.
Well, I'm sure the school board has a priority, no, no, I'm not asking to do it tonight, I'm asking to just say like, right.
Well, we are, we, we are, just so you'll know, um, Chairman Kelly from the school board and I have been in communication, trying to set up another joint meeting.
Okay.
Um, in May, hopefully we'll have.
Yeah, yeah, I just, but it's just something very simple. It's, I know that she's got a lot of goals and the, whatever the, the new goal thing for the schools is, but it's just something very simple, one sheet, one small chart. This is what the numbers get you, and this is what we would spend if we got this, this is where we'd spend it here, if we got that, this is where we, something very, very simple and very, very clear.
Absolutely, we can do it. It's just taking time at this time to rework the entire budget, which I'm in the process of doing because with the compensation study, you place people on new pay scales, you know, each individual, so. But we will, we have been the past two days working towards that, and we will continue to work to, to get very quickly to.
And that brings up one more question I have for you, because I know as teachers, we, um, sometimes we get a pay increase, then we get the step increase. Does that include the step increase for the teachers?
The five percent, we would put it in there as inclusive of the step increase. So they would get a step increase plus a little bit more to make a total of five percent.
Okay. Okay.
Because our step increase runs about one point six eight on the teacher scale.
Right.
So it would be the three point four two.
So it'd be like a combination of combined. And you would do that, and that wouldn't, that would cover every, so it wouldn't be like top heavy at the bottom, and then the people at the top are like not getting anything, it would be, it would be the person at thirty years is still going to make up pretty well compared to the person at step zero or step one.
It's, it's all employees.
Right, 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 well, I just, well, sometimes what schools do is, you know, I mean, and all schools do is they up the pay for the teachers coming in to attract teachers coming in. And then the teachers who have been there for a while don't get nearly, and so you get compression.
Right.
So you've been there for six years, seven years, eight years, and all of a sudden you're.
It's not just schools, it's in.
Yeah, yeah, it's everywhere, but you know, it's, yes.
So our starting pay would not be able to increase five percent, it would increase the difference of the cola, which would be the three point four two percent. Those at the top of the scale would not get the top five percent, they would only get the cola above the step increase.
Okay, may I ask a question, Ms. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure I'm, I'm correct, because I do intend to repeat what we say here, okay?
Certainly.
The budget from the state, the skinny budget has been approved, right?
Yes, sir.
And in that skinny. And in that skinny budget, there's one point eight million directed towards Caroline. For. Uh, standard of quality teacher raises.
No, sir.
It's for everybody.
It's one point one two million directed for standard of quality from state funding. Local money is six thirty four.
So you, you take the one point two from the state, the six thirty four from the county. And that got you to the one point eight you were talking about earlier.
It's one point one two from the state.
Okay.
We also need to keep in mind that we are losing money for basic aid. So our net increase of revenues is only sixty six thousand.
I'm, I'm just trying to get to the, to the, a couple of numbers that I can understand, so when I, when I say something else, it'll, it'll make sense. But, but you said one point eight million, but then I got to two point five million covers everybody. That, is that right?
No, sir. One point eight million is the estimated of a five percent increase.
For everybody?
For everyone. One point one two million is the state funding.
So if one point eight is five percent for everybody. Then a little bit more than three hundred thousand is, is a one percent raise for everybody.
A five percent raise for everyone.
No, one point eight is five percent. So I'm dividing five into eight, which is three point six or something like that. So three hundreds.
Oh, you're trying to get one percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if one point eight equals five percent, one fifth of one point eight should be one percent.
Correct.
So five goes into eighteen, three times thirty left over and then six. So three hundred and sixty thousand is one percentage point for everybody. Sound, sound fair?
Based on the one point eight as an estimate, yes, sir.
Okay, so for every, I guess that's what Mr. Black was asking, for every three hundred sixty more. You could give a one percent raise for everybody. Okay, but to, to further his question, and not speaking for him, but he said the, the teachers came and spoke. And the support staff came and spoke. Is there a way that we could say teachers would get three hundred thousand? They, they would end up with a little bit more than one percent? Cause you're not spreading it out for e- everybody, is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement for you to make.
Right.
School board will, can determine where the raises go to.
Right.
And based on the compensation study increase, or it's compensation study. There's a, a significant amount of employees that are not at market and are below market, that are not teachers.
Okay, okay. So that, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to make sure I understood. Alright. Yes, ma'am. If, Ms. Stevens, you say you're losing basic aid money, correct?
Yes, sir, we are.
Do you know how much and why? And the rationale for that from the state is?
What does basic aid attempt?
Well, the rationale from the state is their two hundred million dollar issue that they had on sales cat, sales tax calculation error.
So the, I thought the general assembly said they were gonna make that.
Yeah.
They did not make it whole for full year twenty four.
Make you whole.
No, they did not make it whole.
So you lost how much in basic?
If I can read this, Mr. Underwood.
Was it three font?
Oh, there is no light down there, sorry.
I can throw my glasses.
Three hundred and fifty three thousand lost in basic aid.
Less than a percent.
That's with our ADM going up a hundred and ten.
Right, to four, forty one?
Four one fifty.
Four one fifty. Ms. Stevens, I have one last question for you, if I could. We, a few years ago, we, we entered into a contract with uh, a firm that promised to do a HVAC energy study. And they promised all these savings and things of that nature. Did that contract not really live up to all its stated goals?
At the middle school, it's meeting its goals. Um, there's not any significant operational savings that we're seeing. Um, and of course, you know, they do the data, so they give us the report every year. And we're not seeing any large kickbacks or operational savings. So the report shows that they're still.
I could at least get something from solar. Um, so in this case, in this case, the contractor came in and said, I'm gonna save you all this money with utility costs. And the reality is you're saying they didn't really do that.
No, the, really what they were able to do was do the upgrades for us. That's, that's really what you're paying for. On numbers, they are showing some savings. As energy costs continue to increase, we're not seeing the dollar savings.
Okay, I should say, but go ahead, you could ask.
At our meeting we had in March, you, there was one of the action items was to get us what the cost for the, for the middle school HVAC. Uh, repair, replace. Do we, did we ever get those numbers? Cause I don't think we ever saw them.
Nope, we said it was going out to bid. It's out to bid and we're expecting we actually push back the award till five two. So we're still waiting for any bids to come in.
So the engineer never gave you a rough cost?
Well, the rough cost that they gave us, we provided to you that evening in the presentation.
Okay, so you don't have a final number yet?
We do not.
Did you, what about the grant that was applied for?
They said we will receive information in June. So we haven't received that either.
So we don't know what that cost is gonna be or what the grant portion would be, yeah?
Correct. We applied for the grant, we do not have an award at this time. And we put the IFB on the market, and we're waiting for an award to be issued on five two. Our bids are coming in on five two. We will.
No, but it's just an additional expense that we haven't, we haven't conquered yet, I guess, capital projects wise. And that, that's all I'm looking at it from a budget perspective, cause.
Cause that's one we've gotta make happen.
Right.
And somewhere, if it's more than estimates in what we gave, we'll have to find where that money comes from. Okay. Ms. Stevens, I, I wanna say we really appreciate you coming down. You weren't given any advance warning to be here. So thank you very much for all the information you provided.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Black will follow up with a one pager.
Okay, any, any uh, other issues you wanna discuss in relations to where we are? At this early stage with the budget. I think we got a lot of base information tonight. You good, Mrs. Long?
Mr. Forehand? I've asked my quota of questions for the evening.
Fortunately, you, there are no quotas on questions, cause I'd be in trouble. Um, Mr. Black, are you good? Alright, do we have anything else that board members would like to uh, discuss? We are, we are not going to vote on uh, Mr. Cully's recommendations to, tonight. Of what to do with the one point five million dollars that was. Discovered. So we will uh, probably take that as an action item when we do the budget. Cause they all affect next year's budget, so we can do that anytime before June thirtieth. The other thing, Mr. Cully, is you said you got a note today expecting the, and you don't have to elaborate. But expecting the general assembly to be back in June.
Correct, it was from the um.
But you expect nothing to happen in June?
It was, it was a, a, an email from the um, executive director of Virginia Association of Counties, which you know, they follow the general assembly closely with their lobbyists. And so the um, skinny budgets passed, um, and, and the governor made four more amendments to the, ones the general assembly made. And they, those were all in the skinny budget. Um, they said they will uh, return to Richmond in June. Um, and there may be some changes, uh, uh, additional budget changes that. But in that they're not making a lot of headway, they, they had talked to various members of the conference committee. Um, that there could be, that there would be no further changes, so it's, it was just informational. Uh, I, what I wanted you to know, that, that, the numbers that we're dealing with are adopted if they don't change anything else. So we're not waiting for them to adopt anything. They may give the schools some more money, they may do some other things. But you know, right now they're arguing over whether they're gonna return it in tax breaks or spend it. And you've got uh, two different houses in two different controls, and so they haven't made a whole lot of progress.
What, what do we do in the case, I mean, the, the schools are our biggest budget item? What do we do if the general assembly hasn't made a decision by, you know, June first? We're adopting our budget probably the end of May, the first part of June.
You're technically supposed to adopt your budget and give the schools a number by May, so they can send contracts out.
Right.
I would, uh, if the general assembly comes back in, in a June timeframe, late June. Everybody's gonna have to amend their budget, because most everybody will have adopted a budget way prior to that. Because you know, the, the schools need the number in, in other counties as well, and then once the tax bill. The tax rate's been set and the tax bills go out, you're pretty much defined within our fund balance, balancing number, or what you're able to do with your budget. So once you've decided that, there's no reason not to adopt that and move on.
So we would probably have a, some sort of resolution to add funds to the school budget if the state does that.
That's what we would come back to you in July, if they, you know, if they said, you need to do this.
Here's, here's money for, I've, I forgot what Ms. Stevens said, um, was the case, they lost money, but.
Right, if they, they make some other things whole and put a match back on us, then we would come back going, we need to, just like a grant. You know, occasionally, it's, it's come to us during the year and go, we need matching money with this grant, and we give them it. It's the reason we keep the large fund balance. I mean, it gives you that ability to have some buffer for things that come up during the year, so. I mean, it, once you're ready to adopt a budget, I would encourage you to do it, so we can move on. We're moving on into audit season, so we're. Uh, I know Tamika will be tired of, you know, we can get the budget produced and online and move into audit, auditors will be here in June.
Auditors are gonna get their, their audit to us before December this go round, aren't they?
I can't make that promise, but we're gonna do all we can, I mean, that's the deadlines are the deadlines, so.
They're on a two-year contract, right?
Oh, yes, but that's.
This is the second year of the two-year contract?
Yeah, that's still.
They're gonna get our budget before December.
That's, that's dependent on them getting the information from us, so.
Alright, they should be able to do that, cause I think all the other departments know how important it is to the board to be able to see actual numbers.
We are working toward that very goal.
Cause that's, I, I mean, the reality is we're doing a budget right now. And we don't have actual numbers for the year we're in, and we barely have actual numbers for the last year, so.
Oh, we got, yeah, we have numbers through uh, December that, that are good, and we've, we've got preliminary numbers through March right now. But we have to put the budget together.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
January, I mean, early February to get that to you in, in March, so you know, we're making our best guess on what we're gonna recommend. Based on what we're given at that time, but yes, we would like for, we would like for uh, to be. Know where our revenues are within, you know, a month to six weeks from that month, so. It's a goal, and we're working toward that.
Yeah, it's, it's not a, you know, criticism at all, it's just if a particular, if you were running your business. And you said I spent this much money for whatever item. When the next year comes around, you don't just add money to your budget, you look at what your actual numbers are.
Oh, yeah.
So you can compare what you, what you need, and priorities may change. So an actual line item on one side may decrease and you add that money somewhere else. That's all I'm saying is.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we try to do that. We, I normally pull the, where we are in actuals. But in that we were on two different, the revenues are over into four hundred, they're not in the Keystone. There was no way to really look at that this year, but we, once we were all on Keystone.
You'll be able to do that next year.
Be able to look at those where we are actuals a whole lot closer, even if they're quote unaudited, so to speak, and not closed. We'll, we'll have a good idea where we're spending on those and where revenues, and where revenues are. Unfortunately, over the last couple of years, most line items haven't gone down because of inflation. Even if you're buying less of it, it's costing you more.
I think that's why certain members of the board pushed to get a real financial system, so if we could just get it all over, that'd be another story.
It'll be, we're closing in on a couple, a couple of those things, to having those things done.
Okay, great. Alright, no other questions? Um, I guess we'll.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, uh, is there a second? Okay, motion's made by Mr. Seeley, seconded by Mr. Forehand, that we adjourn. Uh, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Mr. Cully, just as a closing board comment, um. I spoke to Mr. Kelly during the break, and he knows that you're out the third and fourth. And maybe Mr. Parton and Ms. Smith can substitute for you.
That would be fine.
To do the dual meeting? And then based on the dual meeting, then we can schedule our joint board meeting for May?
Yeah, they can keep me informed.
Okay.
Have all the faith in the world.
Thank you.